I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have June 6th, 2016, and June 13th, 2016, which was a special meeting. So moved. Okay, motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. Any additions or corrections?
Correction.
Uh, Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, um, we dropped item 5F, uh, from the agendas and said didn't need a vote.
On June 13th?
On June, the first set of minutes, I believe, here. Let's see the, the June 6th minutes. That was the-
Yeah, he was the chairman and that wasn't required to be voted on. You're right.
Uh, right here.
Is that a friendly amendment acceptable to the motion?
Yes.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Um, under additions to the agenda, we'll start with the MTD presentation, the designated bus program on Green Street. Brian Smith.
Good evening. I'm Brian Smith. I'm the chief operating officer for Champaign-Urbana Mass Transit. Thank you for having me tonight. With me, I have Drew Bargman. He's our special services manager and was also the one who led this project for us for designated stops. As we get into the presentation, I just wanted to let you know it's going to be a very short presentation. I got about five minutes of your time, uh, and then any questions that you may have. Uh, and first, start out by explaining what a designated stop is. Uh, MTD has both designated and non-designated stops in its system right now. Very simply, a designated stop is a stop that has a bus stop sign at it. Uh, a non-designated stop or a flag stop is any safe corner that the bus runs down the road. Uh, you can stop and flag a bus down, uh, call it a flag stop. So, with that, uh, we are going to be going to a designated stop system in, with the green route, both the 5 and the 50. Uh, I'm not going to read the presentation that's in front of you, um, but understand that this helps out in a lot of different ways. Uh, it improves our efficiency in terms of gathering people to a single location instead of stopping at every single corner along the way. Uh, it also helps new riders identify where to catch a bus. And it also lets folks know to, to where to expect a bus to be stopping, that a bus might not stop at every single corner, but rather could stop, uh, only where they would see a bus stop sign. Uh, it should also, uh, help every time a, a bus driver and a passenger stops, they're going to need to, uh, negotiate whether or not they think it's a safe place to stop. We've had people request that we stop in the middle of an intersection, for example. Obviously, that's not a safe place to stop. Uh, something that might be a safe place in the morning or during a non-rush hour, uh, is absolutely unsafe during, uh, high-traffic situations. So, uh, rather than have that variable and have to have the operator and the, the passenger try to negotiate that between themselves, you put a stop where we know that it's safe to stop, where there's sufficient amenities and what have you, so that people can catch a bus and then be on their way. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, we have had designated stops within our system for a long time. Uh, a couple of pretty clear examples, University of Illinois, downtown Champaign, County Fair, you know, again, I'm not going to read you the presentation, but, uh, this isn't a new concept, uh, but having them throughout a single route is new for us, so wanted to bring it to both, uh, the city of Urbana and the city of Champaign. Uh, I'm going there tomorrow night, uh, to talk about why you might see bus stop signs going up in neighborhoods where we've been going through for years, but there's never been a bus stop sign in my yard. Why is there one there now? Because we're going to, to this designated stop program. We based the location of those bus stop signs on our guidelines document that we developed, uh, last year and finalized, uh, early this year. That was one of the things that Drew was, uh, instrumental in getting completed. Uh, it is intended to be a written tool so that everyone can be working off of the same type of information and understand where we put stops and why we put them, where we chose to put them. Uh, I want to do, I do want to highlight, it is not intended to be rigid. Uh, it's not intended to be something where we say, this is the only place we're going to put a stop and, and nowhere else is good enough. Uh, and in fact, uh, it has in the guidelines itself that, that we can alter where we might recommend a stop based on, uh, extenuating circumstances. I would point to a situation on Springfield here in Urbana where we had to do that, uh, where we took the input, actually of the councilman, thank you, sir, uh, and the input of some of the public. We worked with Brad and, uh, Mr. Gray and came to a mutually agreeable solution on Springfield for a stop that I think works for everybody. Uh, so, these are meant to, uh, be something that we can work with, uh, the public on and work with the cities on, uh, but also have some sort of basis for why we determined where we would put stops. Uh, just as an example, I give you this map. There are several maps available on our website, uh, as to where designated stops are going. In the downtown, we have this separate standalone map, uh, so that people can see it in our schedule book and see where we're going to be stopping. Uh, so these are proposed for, uh, the green route. I would encourage anybody who's interested in looking at specific ones to hop on our website, take a look at what we have. Uh, if you have any questions, if you have any comments, if you think something ought to be moved, by all means, contact me. Uh, I would be happy to, to chat with you. This is meant to be a living document. Um, we're going to be evaluating the, the items and the placement of stops as we go along. Uh, we'll watch for ridership trends. We'll watch for, uh, how we connect to other MTD services, uh, trip generation and, and all of that kind of information so that we keep updating this document as we see changes come about with both the service that we offer and the towns that we operate in. So, uh, what are we going to be doing in, in this year? We're planning this fall to start designated stops along the 55 and 50 green route. Uh, we're going to collect data from that, see how well that goes. We expect to improve efficiency. We expect to reduce complaints about past stops or missed stops. Oftentimes, there can be confusion. Is that person standing on a corner waiting for a stop? Are they standing on a corner waiting for me to pass them so that they can cross the street? And it ends up being a past stop complaint. Uh, so, we'll, we'll measure those things, see what we can do to make sure that it's as effective as possible. And assuming that those things do happen as we expect them to, we'll roll it out to the rest of our routes, uh, in the coming years. So, with that, uh, if anybody had any questions for me, I would be happy to answer them or let you continue with your presentation.
Dennis has a question.
Yeah, and I see their other hands. Um, so then, with these designated stops, typically, how many blocks are they apart? So, people are like, you know, coming off campus or they're coming, you know, from their homes. How much farther would they need to walk there than to the end of their block at the intersection?
It's going to depend on where exactly they live. The denser the neighborhoods, the closer the stops are together, the farther away from the center of downtown or the less dense that the stop, the, where they live is, the farther away the stops are going to go. Um, I would say it, you have a range it goes from-
Sure. I mean, throughout majority of the community, what you'll see is roughly every other block. Um, there may be times, as Brian can mention, as you get further out into the, past the urban core, you, that might stretch to, you know, two, two and a half, but it, it is pretty reasonable.
And I, I ask that partly because not only do I see people running to the bus, uh, from their apartment or home, but I also see people carrying groceries home from bus stops. And, you know, when you have that, plus maybe a child, you know, the distance becomes a concern for people. So, how are you going to take, um, public reaction to this? Are you going to do a, have you taken already, uh, public input? And are you planning on taking public input once this change has put in effect so that people have a chance to come and talk about it?
We did, uh, include this as part of our regular public hearing that we have, uh, at the, at Illinois Terminal every year, uh, for our route changes. Designated stops were part of that. In fact, we had maps up of where they're all going to go and they've been up on the website. Uh, so we've been asking for public input. Uh, we have heard, uh, from some folks concerned about it. We've also heard from riders, in particular, oh my gosh, this is fantastic. I can ride the route without having to stop every block. Uh, so we, we've gotten some who are concerned about not being able to catch the bus at the end of their street and the same people concerned about, you know, efficiency and getting to where they want to go faster, so.
And then my last question is, I have a person, I know a person who rides into campus a lot from Urbana and they're, when, they thought that they were already, um, experiencing, designated stops that had actually been on the green line for a year or two. Am I wrong?
There have been designated stops, uh, heading into campus along Green Street for a while now.
Uh-huh.
In part, just to eliminate confusion on that section of the route. There have not been designated stops throughout the route, um, the entire route.
And that's the change.
That's the change. Yes, sir.
Uh, Charlie and then Diane.
Yeah, I, I assume there was a pretty good lesson learned from the Springfield Avenue issue and that that will be used in other locations.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all.
Dennis, I mean, Diane.
Just so I understand, does this mean people who are on the bus have to get off at the designated stops as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Eric.
So, I just want to, first off, thank you for your responsiveness to the Springfield Avenue situation. And just so everybody knows, I sent Brian an email of an evening and by three o'clock the next afternoon, I received an email from him with a picture of the bus stop placed where we had requested it. So, there was less than 24 hours. So, um, so I'm sure that, I'm sure that he will take input very, very readily. I do have a question about, I have a safety question. Do you think that, let's suppose, as we move across Springfield or as we go across Green Street from downtown to campus, do you think, and now you, you wouldn't, it wouldn't be your domain, it would be the city's domain, but from a safety perspective, would it be desirable to have a marked pedestrian crosswalk at each of those bus stops? Because we're, you're going to have a lot of people walking across the street there.
Well, uh, if I can answer in two parts. Uh, first, my responsiveness, uh, in part, I want to make sure I give credit to Brad because it was being able to work with the, the city staff that we were able to be so quick.
Absolutely.
Um, so, credit where it's due. Uh, I, uh, it was good to work with both Bill and Brad. Uh, and then the second part is that it, I, I wouldn't want to comment on whether or not a crosswalk should be placed. I would say that the guidelines indicate that stops should be located near crosswalks if at all possible.
Mm-hmm.
And that other circumstances might lead that those stops not be right at crosswalks as was the case on Springfield. Uh, and then whether or not a crosswalk would be put in would be something that would be beyond our purview in terms of getting into traffic controls and what have you.
Aaron.
So, um, the, the, the designated stops, if the person is, uh, I don't know, an elderly person who lives in between those two and a half blocks, will the driver have, uh, some sort of discretion and could they make a decision and say, hey, I'm going to let this person off right here? It's raining outside as opposed to taking another block and a half and, or whatever, making them walk?
I will say generally, I mean, the, the idea behind a designated stop system is that we would stop at designated stops. Having started my career as an operator, there is going to be leeway given to the operator to make the best choice. Um, I, I don't want to say we can stop mid-block every time because it, it basically eliminates the purpose of having designated stops. But if we had somebody who requested, you know, if we had a request to put in a stop, um, in between two, two stops and there was a long distance, uh, we might even put in a stop if there was a, a specific draw. In fact, again, going to the guidelines, if there's a place where seniors live, for example, that would be a, a reason to put in a stop because there's a, a generator there essentially. Uh, so if that's a-
Yeah, I'm just thinking about people having, the drivers, the operators having the autonomy to make a decision like that. And I didn't know if the designated stops ruled that out, you know? We've all chased the bus before and really wanted to stop and it said, you know, no, meet me down here, a mile from here.
Right. Well, and, and actually, the, I mean, the chasing of a, of a bus or, or wanting a bus to stop somewhere and the operator not stopping, this is supposed to help that situation where you know where the bus is going to stop. If there's a, a location you want the driver to stop that's in between and there's some motivating factor for it, particularly if they're on the bus, I can see there being some leeway given. I don't want to say that we would completely ignore the designated stops, but I think we can also take into account personal, uh, responsibility on part of the operator and, and allowing them that autonomy to some degree.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. If anyone would like to address the Urbana City Council, um, we have little cards at the back. First is Chris Lucman.
Uh, good evening. Do I just go ahead?
Yes.
All right.
You have five minutes.
That should be more than enough.
You don't have to take five minutes, but you've got-
Yeah, more than enough for me.
Okay.
Uh, like mentioned, my name is Chris Lucman and I own a small business, uh, that we opened in October in downtown Urbana called CU Adventures in Time and Space. Uh, what that is, it's an escape room, um, which is a new industry where, uh, teams of two to 10 players come together, like family, friends, or coworkers, and they have one hour to find clues and use those clues to solve a mystery. It's kind of like a murder mystery theater, dinner theater thing, but there are no other actors. Anyway, uh, we opened last October and since then, we've had great success. We've brought over 4,000 people to downtown Urbana, uh, through our business, and I think we've seen that trickle out to some of the local restaurants and other attractions. Um, and I had two things I wanted to bring up. One, I would like to thank the city for the Small Business Development Grant and the Small Business Opening Grant that gave us an extra boost of confidence and a little bit lower stress when we opened in October. Uh, the other thing I would like to mention is that as a part of those grants, we met with Don Elmore at the Small Business Development Center, and he was extremely, uh, helpful and important and supportive to the opening of our business. Um, my wife and I both come from a background where we have a little bit of small business experience, but this was the first brick and mortar location. It was an all-new industry, uh, so we had some questions about that. And our meetings with Don gave us the, uh, confidence that our plan was sound. Um, that helped us get into this crazy thing. And, uh, he continues to provide great business relationships that are key to the success of, uh, future success of CU Adventures. We just leased a second location on Race Street. Uh, we're currently in 123 Main, uh, in the little Plaza mini mall thing, and we just leased a second location on Main Street right behind Bohemia. And, uh, yeah, we're super thankful for the support of the city and we're super thankful for all the support the Small Business Development Center, uh, gives us. Uh, we hope to see you guys at some point in the future.
Well, thank you for starting a business. Diane?
Well, I'm glad you brought up the SBDC because, um, one of the fallouts of the ongoing budget crisis is that funding for many of the SBDCs is, is gone or hasn't been released from the state and a half dozen or more are in danger of closing. I think that the one at ISU just announced it was going to close. The one here is based in the Economic Development Corporation and we're figuring out ways to, to keep it going. But, but this is another fallout from the, um, crisis in Springfield is that these SBDCs are about to close.
We think ours will be the last one, standing.
But, but the rest of them are really needed too, so it's really important we get this thing resolved.
It's, it was a huge help. I, I don't know where else to, we don't have like a professional mentor. We didn't go into this with a ment, local mentor. Um, and just having that open-ended conversation, you know, is a heck of a lot better than just Google, um, to figure out how this stuff works.
Well, thank you very much for telling us-
Thank you.
-how it's worked for you.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Hughes.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Hughes. I live at 501 East Elm Street. I'm a transportation engineer and I'm also a member of the Champaign County Racial Justice Task Force. Uh, at our most recent meeting this past Thursday, we unanimously passed a statement of support, a statement of support for the Urbana City Council that I'm here to share with you. And this is actually our first formal, uh, action that we've taken so far since, uh, beginning, uh, in January. I'll read the statement. It says as follows, "The Champaign County Racial Justice Task Force commends the Urbana City Council for its recent action to reduce the disparate impacts city fines have on minority populations. The city council acted on a specific recommendation by the Urbana Traffic Stop Data Task Force, which found clear racial disparities in the number of traffic stops, the number of violations cited, and the amount of fines for those violations. The data-driven decision to reduce the minimum fine for possession of small amounts of marijuana was made after additional research, public input, and discussion. The Racial Justice Task Force supports the city of Urbana's continued efforts to act on the recommendations of the Traffic Stop Data Task Force and urges other public bodies in Champaign County to take similar steps to identify and resolve racial injustices in the local criminal justice system." I'd be happy to share that statement via email with anyone who'd like it. Um, it's also available on the county board's website. Um, and then, lastly, I just want to share a side note that we're going to be having two community forums this week. Um, these are community forums on the racial, by the Racial Justice Task Force on the local criminal justice system. We are inviting all community members to come out, um, to share their thoughts, experiences, and suggestions for, um, working to improve, uh, the racial disparities in the criminal justice system. Uh, these community forums are going to be on Thursday, the 23rd, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Church of Living God. And then on Saturday, uh, June 25th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the Independent Media Center. Thank you for your time and thank you for the efforts to, uh, address racial disparities in the criminal justice system.
Thank you very much.
What was your name again?
Ryan Hughes.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it.
Uh, send, would you send me a copy? We'll put it on the city website.
Yes, ma'am.
Eric has a copy.
No, this has just so far been a delightful meeting where people have gone out of their way to say nice things about us, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Certainly.
Charlie?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I keep coming back to this. I just wish we could do more. Um, and it, really, it's up to the state.
Mm-hmm.
Because they control so many of the fine levels. And those fine levels should be, you know, they should be equally painful for somebody who's well-off and for somebody who's poor. You know, if you can, you know, it should be income-driven, income-based, and, and they're not. And that's, that's a real issue, I think. And so, I'd love to see you folks, uh, take it to the state.
Thank you.
Eric?
Actually, I do have one more substantive remark or co, remark slash question. And that is, of course, we had focused so far on things that were within our power to do. There may be other things where we could partner with the county, uh, where there are, oh, well, obviously, in the criminal justice system, uh, Urbana City Police encounter, have contact with our citizens, but they ultimately go into a justice system that's associated with, uh, with the county.
Right.
So, if, if you consider, or if there are ways that we could jointly consider how we could work across these, um, these boundaries and these overlapping responsibilities, I think that would, uh, I think that would be a big, I, I think that would be a very good thing.
Excellent. That's good to know. I think we'll be looking to do that.
Aaron?
And so, along those lines, Ryan, um, I know very well the other side of the organizing component of this. And if the Racial Justice Task Force wanted to delegate someone to come here, uh, either every Monday or every other Monday, to continue to remind this body of how important it is to make sure that we further the findings of that, um, traffic stop, uh, task force. Because, you know, we get bogged down with other things and some things, if they don't stay out in the, uh, in the forefront, they may not get the attention that they deserve.
Sure.
I'm sure we all want to work on those things, but it would be, you know, uh, something that I would look forward to having you all's company every other Monday.
Indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, Reverend King James and Dr. Evelyn Underwood would like to express their concern about the Ellis subdivision sewers, but they do not wish to speak. And Elderess Alinda Carr also is concerned and apparently does not want to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council?
I have a question about that. Somebody was just asking me, a constituent was asking about, and I know Dr. Underwood and them would know the answer to this, but I just wanted to clarify. The types of pipes that you all have in Ellis subdivision, they are clay pipes? Is that correct?
That's what, that's what we was told.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I was, the conversation was about maybe them being the collapsible cardboard types that were used at one point. And I wanted to just make sure. Uh, the point that was raised was that there are other places in, uh, I don't know, Illinois Street or wherever they may be, where there are just tons and tons of trees, but we don't see the same types of problems with, um, tree roots blocking, uh, some of those places. And so, I was, the conversation was just, uh, centered around identifying whether or not these were clay pipes, PVC pipes, or some other type of material. But, so I just wanted to, to make sure I was clear on that.
Maybe not PVC.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jack Volz?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Jack Volz. I'm here on behalf of PI Telecom Infrastructure LLC, also known as Parallel Infrastructure and Verizon Wireless about the proposed special use permit to allow a 95-foot monopole cell tower at 2,000 North Cunningham Avenue. Um, this, this tower is designed to, in addition to Verizon Wireless, accommodate up to three additional wireless carriers. Um, it will be a 60-foot by 60-foot lease area for Parallel Infrastructure within which Verizon has a 20-foot by 36-foot footprint. Verizon's antennas will be at a centerline of 90 feet. And the intention is to fill in their coverage gaps in the packet that was prepared for you. Exhibit G was a coverage map prepared by Verizon Wireless's radio frequency engineers, showing three existing Verizon Wireless sites, one to the east, one to the west, one slightly to the southwest. First page shows, uh, the current coverage. There's unreliable in-home and in-vehicle coverage. Um, after the installation of Verizon's antennas upon the proposed monopole, you'll see that there's reliable coverage. The gaps are filled in. Um, now, in, choosing this location for the proposed tower, I had to disqualify existing structures and rooftops. There were no, uh, buildings with the appropriate height within a mile and a half of the area that Verizon was looking to service. I also took a look at existing cell towers. Um, another exhibit in the packet is a list that I prepared using the FAA's ASR search for all existing towers within two miles of the subject property. There were 14 other towers, three of which Verizon's currently on. The other 11 I had to disqualify because they were either too far from the area Verizon was looking to service or too close to Verizon's existing sites. And there'd be overlapping coverage. The area, um, near I-74 and the Route 45 interchange wouldn't be adequately serviced by new antennas at any of the other locations. Um, we've met all setback requirements pursuant to the telecommunications and zoning ordinances. I believe the recommendation was for a, um, the access road to be paved appropriately pursuant to the zoning ordinance and for a vegetative landscaping plan. Um, I've already spoke to Parallel Infrastructure and these are items that we plan to incorporate into construction drawings when the time comes to file for a building permit. into construction drawings when the time comes to file for a building permit. Are there any questions, concerns, anything I can address?
Dennis?
This topic hasn't really come up yet for our discussion. It's on the agenda. This is maybe a little premature. So, are you going to stay here during the meeting to answer this, or did you want to leave earlier? Is that why you're addressing this question now?
Misunderstanding on my part.
Probably not, but...
Dennis, I might suggest why we just, since we've started this, let's just get the staff report and take it up.
Well, that would be the normal thing.
We are going to finish public participation, okay?
Yeah, if we, if we have finished, I just, I don't see...
Well, there's one more yet to go.
I just wanted to mention, I'd mentioned to Jack that it would be helpful if he mentioned his intention to speak for the public record. And we'll, we'll get to it when the case comes up.
He'll be here, right?
Miscommunication between the two of us. But yeah, he will be available for answering questions. I'll be able to give my staff report and everything else.
Okay.
My apologies. I'm sure that's a first.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. We'll ask, anybody have any questions right now they want to ask? Okay, we're going to get to it on the agenda.
Okay.
If you can suffer through the rest of the meeting, we will get to you.
Gladly.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
And I have a, I'd like to do one thing about public participation.
Okay, so, okay, now Dennis Roberts.
All right, assuming that the public has had a chance to speak. I passed out cupcakes today to the city council and some of the staff with a little message on the top says "Happy Birthday," and so, what is the reason for that? I'd like to remind the people of the history of this community. Urbana was founded on June 21st in 1833. The city is 184 years old tomorrow. And I think these things are important milestones for a community. And rather than have these become totally forgotten and unconsidered, I made a gesture to share cupcakes today. And tomorrow at 5:00, everybody should go out on their front porch and wish their community a happy birthday.
Thank you very much. I think we look pretty good for 184. We don't have any buildings left over from those early days, but, okay, thank you very much, Dennis. All right, we will move on to unfinished business, social service.
So, I, I did send out, I hope all of you received, a spreadsheet with the consensus that I could best achieve mathematically based on your votes. The one complication this year as compared to previous years is that the, is that Michelle participated, and that's great, but her, she only did a set of allocation suggestions that added to $175,000, which was the township portion, as opposed to $250,000. So, I had to figure out a way to do appropriate averaging so that everybody's, everybody's vote with respect to allocation amounts for each application was, was fairly considered. And so, what I did was I just took the, I took the arithmetic average of everybody's vote for each of the candidate applications, but I treated Michelle's a little bit differently from everybody else's. And that is where everybody else left a blank space indicating that they didn't support funding for a particular, for a particular application. I put a zero for everyone up here. But in Michelle's case, I, I just left the space blank. So, if you do a lot with Excel, you'd realize that the averages are computed differently if the space is blank or if it's a zero. Because if you leave it blank, then it's all the non-zero spaces that are counted. So, so I think that was the fairest thing to do. And then, then once I was finished, I had to do some rounding to make things round numbers and make it add up to exactly 175,000 for the township. What I had to do is put some more items onto the township budget that Michelle hadn't put in her funding. And on the other hand, typically, her allocation amounts were much larger because she put them over a fewer number of, of things. So, the final allocations were lower than Michelle had indicated. So, she wound up with more things on her budget that were less, that were funded for lower amounts than, than she had indicated. But I think that, as, so, that was the process, and it's the best representation that I could figure out for the consensus of what you all wanted to do.
Well, thank you for going through all that and your extraordinary efforts to make it be fair. So, did you want to say something, Matt?
No, I'm just here for questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the social services? Diane?
Since I was inadvertently left off your email, could you please send it to me?
Oh, no. Yes, of course, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And I assure you, it was inadvertent.
I'm sure it was.
Do you need to see it, Diane?
Can you see from there?
So, one question. What if the social service agency is going to close?
Yeah, I didn't take any account of, of, of that. So, if we have a, so actually, that's an interest, that's a question that maybe we should think about. Suppose that there is an agency, for whatever reason, that is not able to spend the money we've allocated, and especially for such an unfortunate reason as, because the rest of their money has dried up, that they, they're going to close down. So, I would say that's open for discussion. I'll just, you know, you've asked me a question. I'll tell you what I would think. I would think that maybe, maybe we should have some sort of consensus process for reallocating that money to, to the other projects that we, that we support. And so, if we get to a situation where that's, it's absolutely clear that that's what's going to happen, then I would, I would think that would be a good thing to do.
Anyone else? Do you want to make a motion to accept what you've...
I move that we accept what I did.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, with the, we have a motion to approve the list as prepared by Eric Jacobson based on what we submitted to him. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Oh.
Woman scored.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Well, I participated, but I guess I won't vote, right? Well, you want to vote? Sure. Okay, yes. Okay, that motion carries. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole. Who did the committee of the whole? Diane, go ahead.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move ordinance number 2016-06-047, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 25, Legacy Tree Program. Section 2565 Consent, Section 2569 Public Awareness Programs, Section 2572 De-listing an Unhealthy or Declining Legacy Tree.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move resolution number 2016-06-034R, resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the Urbana Park District for inclusion of Urbana Park District trees in the City of Urbana Legacy Tree Program.
A second.
Second.
I think Charlie was first there. Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I support this, yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2016-06-035R, resolution authorizing acceptance of grant for Market at the Square from the First Federal Savings Bank Sprouts at the Market Grant.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Brown. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
For the committee of the whole, I move resolution number 2016-06-036R, resolution authorizing acceptance of grants for Market at the Square. This is the SNAP Double Value Program.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Brown. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yay, Foken Roots.
Yes. Mr. Smythe? That motion carries.
For the committee of the whole, I move resolution number 2016-06-040R, an amendment to the Urbana Home Consortium Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program Agreement for Community Elements.
A second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Charlie?
There's a note on our desk that there's a ownership change, and we need to send this back to committee.
Oh.
So, I moved to send this back to committee.
Ah, yeah.
Okay. Did, did we not get that?
We didn't vote yet. We just had a motion, and then Charlie brought up that there's a problem here. So, we, we could send, we could send it back to committee? Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Or just send it to the next council meeting?
We would prefer to have it come back to committee. The changes that we need to make to the amendment are much more substantial than what was already amended and reflect the ownership changes. So, yeah, we were just, we would like to bring it back to committee.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment?
Should I just withdraw the motion?
You can withdraw the motion if you like.
I'll withdraw the motion and move to send this back to committee.
Second.
Okay. All right, it's withdrawn.
Can I ask a question then?
Yeah, sure.
So, I'm wondering, do we know the, I guess we're going to be introduced to the new owner?
Is this a reconfiguration of current conglomeration?
Okay, that's, yeah. The organization is going to be called Rosecrantz Incorporated. And the reason that the, the ownership change occurred was just to be able to provide more services. But because our current agreement is made with Community Elements Incorporated, it becomes legally difficult to then reimburse them. So, we just want to try to make sure that all of our agreements are in line with who we're going to be giving home funds to. So, that was the impetus behind this.
Okay, great. Because I wouldn't want to lose these people.
Absolutely not, no. Thank you.
Okay. Next is reports of special committee. Well, she just withdrew it. Is that okay?
I moved to send it to committee. You still need to send it back to the...
Okay. Motion by Smythe to...
No, I withdrew my motion to committee.
Is that going to be by Smythe? Is that correct?
Yes. All right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. All right, reports of special committees. Any reports of special committees? Dennis?
Yeah. I just want to let everybody know that the Urbana Sister City Committee, which is actually a program, is going to participate in the Fourth of July Parade. And we've invited the 25, possibly 50 individuals who are here studying under the African Leadership Program at the African Study Center to participate if they want to. And anyway, we'll be in the parade, and it's a time for us to recognize the importance of our sister city partnerships in the world.
Okay. Reports of officers? Don't seem to have any. New business, ordinance number 2016-06-048, an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow construction of a 95-foot monopole telecommunications tower with antennas and a telecommunications equipment enclosure in the B3 General Business Zoning District.
So, as previously mentioned, this is an application for a special use permit by Insite RE Incorporated on behalf of PI Tower Development LLC for a special use permit for a 95-foot monopole telecommunications tower with antennas and a telecommunications equipment enclosure at 2,000 North Cunningham Avenue. So, the subject property is located near the intersection of Cunningham Avenue and Interstate 74 in northern Urbana. It was annexed several years ago. It's vacant. It has a outdoor advertising signage structure, but it is otherwise vacant. It's Zone B3. Towards the south and towards the east are properties that are within the county. Towards the east are condominiums. They are zoned R3 to family residence within the Champaign County zoning designation. The property to the south is zoned B4 General Business for Champaign County. And then, as you go further south, that is properties within the city that are zoned B3 General Business. Towards the north, you have a vast stretch of the intersection that is public right-of-way. And across the road, you have the Eastland Suites Conference Center and a automotive repair business. Those are also zoned B3. So, the zoning ordinance indicates a, quite, several criteria and requirements for placement of new towers in a order of preference from public property to other public properties to industrial properties and properties not affecting residential properties. And then, towers not located on residential properties, but that might be in proximity to, which is what brings us here. The applicant has provided an inventory of the existing towers for the Verizon network, as well as demonstrated through a coverage map and a proposed coverage map of what, of the need for a tower in that part of the metropolitan area, as well as the coverage that it would provide or enhance if located in that area, as well as an inventory of nearby towers and sites located within close proximity of structures or existing towers. And the applicant is ready to state that there are, there is no availability of nearby towers or other tall structures for the ability of co-location, as there might be in other parts of the city. So, in the zoning ordinance, any proposed tower within 250 feet of a residential use, as this would be, would be a, would require a special use permit, such as here. The tower would be 95 feet tall when you include the antenna, as well as the lightning, the lightning rod for the tower. The zoning ordinance also requires that for any tower that is within 250 feet of a residential use, that it maintains a setback of at least 150% of the tower height. With that would be approximately 143 feet, give or take. And the applicant is, has demonstrated through the site plan that it maintains a proper distance to the condominiums from the east, since the site back is 144 feet to the property line. And staff measurements towards the south and towards the west of Cunningham... And staff measurements towards the south and towards the west of Cunningham Avenue and towards the north, towards the, the general intersection, indicate that it would maintain a clearance from any structures or dwellings or, um, structures used for commercial residential activity. I could give specific numbers if, if that's requested. The staff crit, the criteria for a special use permit ask the, the following questions, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at the location. It would improve the cellular connection for Verizon and it would, for residents, businesses and transportation along a major interstate, it would also provide the opportunity for co-location. The second criteria, that the proposed use is designed, located and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. It will be designed to be, to meet all applicable government and industry standards. It's designed to comply with FCC and FAA regulations as well. And it's still required to meet all of the city's building safety code as well as the city zoning code for maintaining a proper distance from uses it might adversely affect. Uh, the third criteria is that the proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located except for where such regulations and the standards are modified by Section 7. Seven. The proposed tower appears to meet all the requirements set forth in Section 13.1 of the zoning ordinance um, in regards to development regulations for telecommunications facilities. The applicant, in staff's opinion, has demonstrated a need for coverage and absence of any pre-existing tower or tall structure to co- locate an antenna. It'll create an opportunity for co-locations of other antennas for other carriers as well. The Urbana Plan Commission heard this case on June, June 9th. And they asked some questions related to, specifically relating to the, the fall radius and the, the safety that the antenna would provide from nearby buildings or they also asked about, they wanted, they had a few members asked questions about specifically stating the need for an antenna in the area. The Plan Commission forwarded this case to the city council with a recommendation, with six ayes and one nay with a recommendation for approval of the following conditions. Uh, one condition is that the tower and equipment conform generally to the site plan submitted with the application. Two, that the proposed access road be paved with an approved surface as defined in the zoning ordinance. It doesn't state that currently in the site plan, but it can be a condition for approval or the issuing of any building safety permits.
Would you repeat that again? Which was the condition, the second one?
Uh, that the access road on the site plan
Okay.
be paved with an approved surface as defined in the zoning ordinance. The third condition, that the tower and related utility equipment shall be appropriately screened, screened with landscaping vegetation as required in Section 13. One R7 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the approval of a submitted landscaping plan by the zoning administrator. One wasn't included with this application because of time constraints, but the applicant states that they are, they have a plan put together that will be submitted with any, any building permit application, so. The fourth, the fourth condition would be that design, installation, operation of the tower shall be in accordance with all the applicable city, state and federal codes, ordinances and regulations, including those for public health and safety. And that the fifth is, if the tower is no longer being used, the applicant shall remove the tower within 180 days. Failure to remove an abandoned tower within said 180 days shall be grounds for the city to cause removal of the tower at the owner's expense. The applicant, as you're probably aware, is going to speak and elaborate on his application a little bit and provide some more in-depth information. Before he comes to speak, did you have any questions for staff?
Dennis?
Yeah. So one of the things that one of the things that came up in the conversation in the commission was, um, yes, the removal of the tower, which you said was covered by state, I guess Urbana law or Urbana statute. I remember you did say that, but the question also came up about a removal of the 20-foot, well, how much of the 30-foot subsurface foundation would be required to be removed if the, if the, um, tower was abandoned?
You're talking about like a concrete foundation for the, the equipment enclosure?
Yeah, which was, uh, you know, which is the anchor of the tower because it's a very tall structure. And according to the diagram or the, reading the notes, it said it would be 30 feet deep foundation, cement foundation. So, um, one of the questions by, I don't, I don't know if it was Mr. Fell or Mr. Trail, was about, you know, the removal, how much of the removal of that foundation is required? And, you know, would all of it be removed or would the top of it be removed or would it be abandoned in, at site?
The ordinance states any antenna or tower, it state, it at least mentions that specifically. If you're going as far as the enclosure equipment or the concrete foundation, I'm looking at the ordinance right now to see if it makes any distinction.
The ordinance is not specific.
Right.
It doesn't get specific to subgrade, so it'd be something that we would need to discuss should it come up.
Okay. I mean, is that something that we would, you know, since we're, we're talking about certain requirements as we're passing this ordinance, if we do, we're considering it anyway. And one of the upgrades was a paved road rather than a gravel road. It might be wise for us to consider whether it's important and maybe, or you can tell me, like, you know, is this a concern for the city in the future for future use? Or is this up to the private property owner to decide how much of this is important to remove?
Certainly you could consider a condition. However, generally, since this is a lease condition or lease situation, it is really up to the property owner. But if it's something you're really concerned about, it's a condition you can place on it. I'm not sure if the applicant would agree to it though. But that is your prerogative, of course.
Okay, well, thanks for that guidance, anyway.
Anyone else? Yes, Bill?
Um, just a kind of a procedural question as far as how notification works when we're next to county property? Um, since there, the residents that are causing this to be a special use case are in county property. Do we, we put up the sign on the property as far as public notice goes?
We put a sign on the property and we regarded the, the same 250-foot radius regardless of whether they were in county or city property for, just to notify the residents like we would, like we would as if they were in the city.
So there was no difference if they'd been in the city, the process would have been the same?
For public notice, no, there was no difference.
Okay. And if, um, if the tower was in the county, do you know what their ordinance or the zoning would require as far as notice or distances or anything?
I don't recall what their requirements are for separation requirements or for public notice.
If it's something that would require a special use permit, we get notification of their agenda items. So then we can decide whether or not it's something that we should discuss with them. I'm not sure when a special use permit might be triggered for an antenna in the county, however. If it was by right, then we wouldn't know about it until after a building permit was issued.
Okay. And it looked like nobody came for public input during the public hearing, is that right?
No, we did not receive any
No opposition or neighbors?
Communication regarding the, or any, no one that spoke for or against the Plan Commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah. Um, so I did go out to the property today and checked it out. And I had a very interesting conversation with one gentleman who stopped to ask me what I was doing there. He was a, uh, apparently a property owner in the area for a long time. He said he'd lived in the area for quite a long time. And he said that, did you know that there was a basement on that property? And he said he knows about that particularly for two reasons, that there was once a tavern at the site, which I hadn't heard about. Of course, I have, I don't know about every piece of property in this city, so that was news to me. And he said that also that occasionally semis would pull up on the property to park overnight. And one of them sank up to its hubcaps because of the subsidence and because there was a basement filled there, so. So I just want to, when, and I don't remember the gentleman's name who is going to present for Powell, Powell Incorporated, whatever, Powell Incorporated. Just would like to get some info, obviously, that whether he knows about this condition and whether it's accurate or not. Because I didn't go to the county records to check it out.
There was a survey plot included in the application of which we didn't find anything in our staff evaluation, but Mr. Volz might be able to speak specifically on that as well, so.
And one other point. All cell towers have to undergo before they're constructed an archaeological survey has been carried out, or what's the plan for that?
Uh, the applicant could probably better state to any requirements for that. The, we did not have any process or
I think that's a state regulation.
I believe so, yes.
If it's a state regulation, how does the state know about this?
There would need to be something filed, right? So, I mean, I guess that's a question that I hope that our individual will enlighten us on.
The tower is, is subject to all state and federal regulations.
Do they send inspectors out or what do they do?
The applicant could probably better answer those questions.
We will. One thing at a time. Mr. Volz?
Welcome back. All right, let's try this again. My apologies for my confusion earlier. Yeah, for the sake of time, I won't push you all to sleep with my presentation. And I'll just get right to answering some of your questions, Mr. Roberts. I believe what you were just discussing is known as NEPA. So those are environmental standards testing that needs to be completed, involves archaeological studies. I can also address your question about potential tavern or the personal anecdote about semi-trailer sinking. I don't want to question, you know, the veracity of this individual's statements, but what I can tell you is that the environmental vendors that we've used on behalf of Parallel Infrastructure and Verizon Wireless have conducted geotechnical analyses and a Phase 1 analysis. We already have all those results. There's been no cause for concern at this time. We expect to have all of the NEPA results in at the end. Actually, we have those in. And there were no issues raised with that either. So when it comes to meeting all FAA, FCC, state and federal regulations from an environmental standpoint, Parallel and Verizon have already completed the necessary testing and filed all the proper paperwork that's all squared away. The other question you raised was about the tower footing. So that's the section of the tower that's below grade. You know, most monopoles go down as deep as 30 feet, depending on the height of the tower itself. In regards to how much of that tower footing is removed, should the tower be demolished? That is a question that is, there's a lot of variability there. It's based on, in most cases, the ground lease between the tower company and the property owners. Some, some property owners will get a clause put into the, the lease agreement stating that upon removal of the tower, the footing is removed to X feet below grade. In my experience, I see it typically removed anywhere from five to eight feet or so. Deep enough that future developments can do their building without any interference or significant concerns. To remove all 30 feet, however, is non-standard in the industry because it's just such a massive undertaking. Incredibly expensive. Lots of heavy equipment needed. It's essentially like you're putting the tower in from scratch again, just to get it out. Lots of ground disturbance. Mr. Roberts, does that address all your questions? I, my apologies for my memory. I think that was
It's pretty good. And let me think. There was some, one other that was coming up. Let me think. So you, you probably would then have, um, on file eventually, if not immediately, record of the archaeological survey that was conducted.
Yeah, I have all of them.
And I, and I wouldn't expect you'd find anything at that site because it's, you know, probably disturbed already by other construction. But, okay, you know, just one of those things that I want you to do. There was some other thing that I wanted to ask you about. Otherwise, I mean, I, I appreciate, I mean, yes, it's really a kind of a, it's a agreement you're having with a private individual. Okay, I know what it is. The, the, uh, the lease is typically used, as, as I was reading in the notes, about 30, a 30-year lease, but actually it's a five-year lease that's, that's renewable. So what does that mean as far as your commitment to the tower's future? I mean, will there be, is it likely that there could be a problem in 10 years? Or, you know, depends on the owner of the property and you're agreeing again to renew the lease.
Yeah, I would say that's highly unlikely. As I had mentioned earlier, the tower is designed to accommodate up to three additional carriers beyond Verizon. So Parallel Infrastructure's intention is to have as many carriers on there as possible so that they can fill in gaps in their coverage, if those exist. You're accurate in saying Parallel Infrastructure in particular, their leases operate with a five-year initial term and five additional five-year renewals. Now, there is specific language in this lease precluding the landowner from opting out ahead of time. Now Verizon, if they find that their, their coverage objectives aren't met, antennas out there don't provide the service that they need, in that case, they would look to find solutions elsewhere. But as I had already mentioned, that's a very unlikely situation, low probability.
One, one final question. Had you also looked at property on the north side of the expressway in that area? I mean, was it, you found this piece of property because this was a convenience and
Yeah.
the owner was amenable, right?
So the, as the coverage map Exhibit G kind of demonstrates, the, the primary area that Verizon is looking to service is south of that I-74 Cunningham Avenue interchange. It's all of those local businesses, hotels, um, to the east and west of Cunningham Avenue. So going further to the north, although I believe that's unincorporated, it would be further from the area we're looking to, to service, so a higher tower would be required. Additionally, that's closer to Frasca Field. So there were concerns about getting FAA approval for having a, you know, tower of significant height there. Which while I'm on that topic, another one of the exhibits in the staff report is our FAA letter of determination of no hazard to air traffic. So we actually already have FAA registration. If you search their website, this proposed tower will pop up already.
And one more. What was, and could you, can you again remind me what in miles, whatever it is, the diameter of the service area?
Service. So there's a few variables that, that, um, affect that. One being ground elevation, two being the height of the tower, three being the center line at which the antennas are mounted. Verizon's antennas here will be at a center line of 90 feet. So you're looking at significant coverage improvements for about a quarter mile, a half mile radius, as the coverage map shows. Um, the, the higher, so the antennas work on PCS, AWS, LTE. I don't want to, you know, bore you all with the, the frequency information, but some, some of the radio waves will propagate further, some not so much. But the ones of lower frequencies are, you know, better able to get through walls and provide in-home service.
Okay, thanks.
I think Charlie and then Diane.
Well, I think most people want better service, so I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any other questions or discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Aaron?
So I just want to get a better understanding. It seems like Mr. Frail or Mr. Trail or somebody, I think it's Mr. Trail, was asking questions about who else would be accessing the tower. So is it the desire for Verizon to rent the space on the tower to other places or would it just be a tower for Verizon?
So wireless carriers aren't in the habit of owning towers. It's Parallel Infrastructure, PI Telecom LLC is their entity name listed in the staff report. They're the tower company that will construct the tower and own that 60-foot by 60-foot lease area. Verizon intends to become the anchor tenant or first carrier to co-locate their antennas on the tower. And they'll have their leased space within Parallel's greater ground footprint. The site plan calls out, I believe it's like dotted lines, future spaces for other carriers. At, at this time, you know, Parallel's not actively advertising the tower as I'm here to secure necessary governmental approvals. Hypothetically, once the building permits in hand though, they look to reach out to T-Mobile, Sprint, AT&amp;T, your other major carriers. And so your question in terms of access, are you wondering how often or who would be out at the tower?
I was just wondering for my understand, my own understanding and whoever's listening, watching this, because I'm just, you know, whether it's radio frequencies or whatever, it seems like there's someone who owns the major, who's the primary or the anchor tenant or who owns it. And then they rent spaces on that antenna or that tower to other people. And I was just wondering if this was going to be a And I was just wondering if this was going to be the same?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be more concise. I'm sorry if I was kind of rambling before. So the tower company is Parallel Infrastructure. There's other major tower companies that will build the towers. And then they lease vertical real estate, or particular centerlines on their tower, to the carriers to put their antennas on. And then X carrier, in this case Verizon, has their ground equipment. So their smaller lease area within the tower company's greater footprint.
Okay. Eric?
So, I'm taking the sense from what you're saying that there's nothing in this arrangement that's going to minimize competition. That is, other companies will have essential, I mean Verizon is the anchor tenant, but other companies will have essentially equal access to this facility to, to build their businesses.
Yeah, that's correct. Verizon has the benefit, as the anchor tenant, of getting the highest center line. So their antennas will be able to service the greatest radius area. But, you know, Parallel's best interest is to have as many carriers on the tower as possible. So the greatest variety of service for the local residents in the area of this proposed tower.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Is there any other discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last thing on the agenda is the reappointments to boards and commissions. Daniel Larson to Human Relations, Ivy Williams to Civilian Police Review Board, Alice Novak Historic Preservation Commission, Barbara Hedlund Public Arts Commission, Barbara Anderson Tree Commission, Charles Warmbrun Zoning Board of Appeals, and Dale Snyder to the CU Cable and Telecommunications Commission and the UPTV Commission. Dennis?
I'll make a motion to approve these nominations.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and since there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.